Everyone, it's the Bryan City Council meeting, Monday, February first, 2021. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes that council has in front of them.
I'll make a motion to Jim.
I'll second Judy.
Tim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Next up is any public hearing of concern? Is there anyone calling in, Mayor?
There have been no calls at this time.
Okay. Next up is item number three, an ordinance, Lori, will you please read?
Ordinance number five, 2021, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the probation grant for 2021 of $10,798.11. An appropriation request for the J-Rig grant for 2021 for $38.22. A tran- or an appropriation request of $143,000 to allow for a transfer from the 501.5 Electric Fund or 501 Electric Fund to the 515 Electric Capital Reserve Fund. This is a request from the Board of Public Affairs from their last meeting, as well as a request for appropriation in the 515 Electric Capital Reserve Fund for the GT Controls Upgrade Project for $143,000. Total amount of appropriation requested, $296,836.33.
Unless there's any questions, I'll move to suspend.
I'll second, Rick.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, yes.
I'll move to approve, this is Judy.
I'll second, this is Jim.
Judy?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is item number four, Lori, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number six, 2021, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending February 28th, 2021. This is a transfer request of $1,043,000 from the 501 Electric Fund to the 515 Electric Capital Reserve Fund. Again, this was requested from the Bryan Board of Public Affairs at their last meeting, as well as a transfer request of $84,681.80 from the half percent income tax fund to the 506 wastewater treatment fund to allow for the payment of the sanitary sewer overflow elimination debt for this year. I will, I would like to say that with this payment for 2021, we'll be down to $123,000 and this project will be paid off next July.
Good. This is Judy, I move to suspend.
This is Jim, I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'm moving to approve, Rick.
This is John, I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Up next, item number five, and higher for the police.
Good evening. Before you, I've got a piece of paper from the city of Police Department. We recommend the employment of Jonathan Wood as a full-time patrol officer with the city of Bryan Police Department upon his successful completion of any and all pre-employment medical examination. His starting, starting date will be determined upon that, and he will have a one-year probationary period. Jonathan's an officer and striker right now, and we're hoping to get him in here as soon as we can to start getting our numbers back up.
Yeah, I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the annual reports. Mayor, how do you want to do this, just start off with engineering first, or do you want to introduce them, or?
Yep, I'm happy to. First, for engineering, we have City Engineer Brian Whelan, who will provide you a short summary from the annual report. Again, after discussion with council, we decided to kind of shorten these up just because we're virtual. The media and you all have been provided with full reports. Go ahead, Mr. Whelan. I think he froze.
Yep, he's not moving.
All right, so while we're waiting for him, Ben, Dominic from Parks and Rec?
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect, I'll go ahead and, obviously, it's, it's an abbreviated annual report due to COVID-19, which I'm sure you're going to hear multiple times this evening. But real quickly, in my annual report, in front of you, you have a copy of our staff, and I just want to mention each one of them, Bruce Wheeler, Cindy Rao, Cora Gosha, Greg Hartman, Tony Scanlon, Brandon Sullivan, and Holly Gambler. In all honesty, the pressure of COVID-19 went to these guys and girls because we didn't hire a lot of seasonal personnel. So a lot of the day-to-day operations that our seasonal summer staff helped us with, these guys had to take on, and they did a terrific job doing it, and I'm very blessed to have the staff that I have to work with. So I want to make sure that you guys know that. A couple boards and commissions that I have the opportunity to work with, I put in there for you. I have my park board, which you guys can see all of my park board members, and then I add hoc members to the park board. I also have the privilege to work with a tree, my tree commission. We do have some new members to the tree commission. Mick McCarnes is fairly new to us. Dennis Harrison is new this year to us, and Erica Lewis is new this year to us. So we're starting to get some new ideas, some new blood in there, so to say. And I hope that helps the tree commission moving forward. After that, you'll go into what is our annual report. And again, we do our best, these numbers are not exact numbers. Some of them are exact, some of them aren't. But we do our best to try to and associate a number with all of our events and activities that we have going on. That way, we can kind of put our finger on what's being used or what's not being used, and how much it's being used. So all those numbers are there in front of you. Obviously, you can see that our shelters and pavilion rentals were way down this year. Obviously, with COVID, we didn't do the rentals. You can see a lot of the events, numbers-wise, were down, and actually, what we offered was down, again, due to the COVID. We estimate the grand total of about 85,000 people used our park, used our park facilities. That number was helped a little bit by baseball, softball, being able to play towards the end of the summer, and then also a pretty much full soccer season. So that kind of helped our numbers a little bit as we, as we moved towards the end of the year. But obviously, nowhere near the numbers that we typically have using the parks. After that, I just kind of went through and again, gave you the breakdown for our facility usage. And then I also gave you the breakdown for our total facility usage over the last five years with a five-year average. Obviously, the five-year average is weighted a little bit different because of COVID, but at least it gives you an idea of where we're at, what COVID did to our year, and then kind of where we sit for the five year. I did that not only for all of our programs and activities, I also did it for our shelters and pavilions. So you can see that information, and then with the pools, being we didn't open, obviously, our usage was zero. So I did at least show you the bar chart for the pool usage along with the five years and the five-year average. So you can kind of see how that affected our pool numbers. Again, in a normal year, things are different, but that's kind of where we sit, so I wanted you to be able to see that. I also put in there a couple sheets, the 2020 completion list. You may look at it and say that list is small. The reason the list is small is, again, because my full-time guys spent a lot of time on mowers, a lot of time with weed eaters. They were doing a lot of things that normally our seasonal staff does. So therefore, some of the other things that they normally do that you would see on the completion list, it's not there. We still managed to get quite a bit done, but it's a lot less than what normally we would do in a year's time. And then the very last sheet I put in there for you is our donation, so you have some kind of idea of donation-wise, what we receive in a year. A couple of them I want to draw your attention to, Kiwanis Club did some playground equipment. They've actually done two sets of that. One appeared in 2019, one appeared in 2020, and they've already expressed an interest in doing another one in 2021. The other big one that you would find on there would be the amphitheater. So we, we kind of set through a dollar amount at that, so you could at least see that in our numbers. It kind of inflates our numbers a little bit, but it's still a donation to the city or to the parks, either way you look at it. So, again, that's my abbreviated. Normally, I would have all that colorful stuff in front of you on a screen, but someday, we'll be able to do that again, just not today.
Ben, I do have one question, this is Judy.
Yeah.
When the COVID first started, you had said that you were going to make some changes to the more, well, I think more pool restrooms, where you would go in and it wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to touch anything. Did any of that take place, or is it still on hold, or have you changed, or?
So the More Pool and East End Pool was part of our capital budget this year, and we are already working with Shears Plumbing and Heating right now to make both East End and More Pool restroom, changing locker room facility as hands-free as we can make them.
Okay.
So yes, our, our hope is, is it'll be 95% hands-free.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Nice report.
Hey Ben, I just have a comment more than a question. I'm looking at the completions list, and you're saying that's a short list, but I know how COVID has crippled people so much, and I look at things like the new Mayberry Drive and pickleball courts and things like that, the AED installation, and I think that you and your staff need to be commended for doing a great job because to be able to get those types of things, those bigger projects done in a time when you didn't know what your personnel is even going to be, I think is, is Yulman's task, and you did a great job.
Thanks, Rick. Again, a lot, a lot of it goes to the staff. I work with, with great people, and they, they want to make sure that our parks are the best they can be, and I'm very thankful for those guys and, and ladies that, that make that happen for us in our community.
Thank you to you and your staff.
Yeah, you got a great crew with yourself.
Thank you.
Anyone have any more questions for the parks? Okay, Ben, that was excellent, and I know I've told you this over the last year, but you guys have done a great job, and it's been pretty outstanding considering the part-time employees that we typically do hire. A lot of our full times were swinging between projects and mowing and just the normal stuff they didn't usually have to do, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, we, as the parks, greatly appreciate everything you've done for us over the last year and your support to keep things moving forward as much as we can.
Well, I think we're all certainly looking forward to 2021 and hopefully some more things opening up for all of us, but thank you. Brian, are you available?
Yeah, we'll try this again here and see if I lock up or not. I'll give you the truncated version. I know you all know I like to talk, and I always love doing my PowerPoint presentation, so when this COVID's over, I may bore you with the presentation this summer. But I'm going to actually turn my camera off here because I think that might be part of my issues. I guess we'll start with, like, the code compliance and zoning. We had 247 complaints in the zoning department. That includes like structural issues, sidewalk issues, painting, permit violations. Eighty of those complaints were fixed. Twelve of them were referred to the city attorney, and 155 are still in progress or pending. And I know it seems like a lot, but some of these are, you know, like people had to repaint their whole house, or they had portions of the structures that were condemned or whatnot. So, you know, we're slowly working through those and giving them a little bit of time so they can afford it. With Cliff, our program we had with him, the Clean Up Bryan Project, Cliff had 207 cases last year, and 170 of them are resolved. Twenty-seven of those ended up being citations. We actually went to court and whatnot, and again, his is, you know, trash, you know, junk cars on private property and several other things, just basically to clean Bryan up. So I'm real pleased with the amount of work he's done and Andy's done, you know, trying to clean up other areas, and I told Cliff he was going to work himself out of a job, but every year, they keep coming back. We'll talk a little bit about my major projects I did. There were four major projects, over 1.4 million that we had spent out of our city funds. One was Connector Street from Page Street on the Beaman Street. Bryan Excavating had that, $353,000. And again, that's part of an almost $1.2 million project with Johnson Drive and West Beaman Street. So it really makes a nice addition once we get that industrial park sold off. The asphalt program, west and southwest parts of town, 593,000. Gherken paving had that, very pleased with their work. Paving marking program, we do that every year, that's over $100,000. Ricky had talked about Mayberry Drive, we got that project finished, $375,000 out of pocket. Paul and Bring Excavating did that, that's the first time I've worked with them here at the city. Good bunch of guys, real pleased with their work. I know we kind of struggled at the end trying to get the asphalt done, but their pavement broke, and it was, I think the mayor remembers that day. It was a, it was a pretty stressful day for all of us trying to get everything resolved there, but we got the problem taken care of and got the project. Two other things I just want to note, Don North Vestabule, we added that on, and of course, that was designed pre-COVID. So now, post-COVID, they'd like to have some things different over there, but either way, it still gives the bailiff a lot more room down there, gives the courts a lot of flexibility for entrance, and it keeps getting a little, little warmer in the winter and a little cooler in the summer. So we're pleased to have that. And about the last project I want to talk about was the South William Street Waterline Project. Bryan Excavating got that, $690,000, and that was kind of a joint project. I had applied for Ohio Public Works Funds through Ohio Public Works, it was a joint project between Bryan Municipal Utilities and our office. The engineering handled the paving portion of it, the asphalt on that, and they, PMU handled the water portion. I think we ended up keeping about, let's say, maybe 70,000, that 275 of grant funds towards paving, and the balance went to their waterline project, so good year overall. It kind of started out a little rocky with COVID, and, you know, we had people doing shared work and so forth, but it was actually a really busy summer. We basically spent the same dollars that we typically spend and seemed to do it in a little bit less time, so I'm really pleased with that. And again, if you all have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
I just have a comment, I really, really enjoy the pictures that you put in. Some of these, I saw them as you were doing them, but I kind of forgot, and when you put those pictures in, I can go back and, oh yeah, I remember that. I remember the stage of that, so thank you for those.
Well, do you remember Fountain Grove Drive, Judy, you remember going out there and seeing that?
Oh, yeah.
You wanted, you wanted to know what reclamation was, and you got to see it firsthand, so.
Yes, I did, I walked it almost every day.
Sure.
Yeah, Brian, I have a, I have a question, you hit on, you hit on a little bit, and it's the violation division, and I'm not, I'm not advocating that we take a more stringent, strict, let's kick people in the pants, I'm not advocating at all, I just, I don't understand the process. But the one thing that does jump out that you pointed out is that there were 247 issues of the violations, and we have about almost two-thirds of them pending. My first question is, is that, because I don't remember it being quite that high, is that somewhat typical? The second one is, what's the process to, I understand people, the more that they need to do, they need more time, and, but how is that done, is that like between Andy and the homeowner? So those are my two questions, is that typical, and what's the process?
Yeah, let's just say, for instance, let's say, John, your house needs lighting, you know, or it needs painted, or we've got, or I guess roofing is the biggest one that we had. You know, the roofs look really bad, they're starting to leak, so what the process is, Andy sends them a letter, certified letter, and tells them they're in violation, and then gives them, I have to give them like 30 days to respond. And, and once they do respond, then we have to give them a reasonable timeframe to take care of the problems. And of course, you know, we were working pretty shorthanded, you know, May, June, and July, doing the shared work program. You know, in our office, we were trying to help out a little more and save a few more dollars, so a lot of Andy's issues didn't really get taken out until August or September, and it got to the point where, you know, it's tough for the people to be warned in September and then get a citation in October, and then they have trouble. So that's just one example of, you know, why there's so many still in progress or pending, because it happened late in the summer when they got their notifications and citations, and we have to give them a reasonable amount of time to deal with that.
Okay, and is that about the, so is this a more atypical year with the 64%, I can't remember in the past?
No, I, I think we actually had more complaints than normal. We did it a little bit harder than what we typically had in the past. I think last year, Andy might have had 150 or 175, so he had more. But that's, I'd say we get at least half compliance usually, and then the other half, we kind of give them another warning letter, but this year, we got tired of sending multiple warning letters, and we just said, fix it or else, so, you know, we're taking it now.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments or questions for Brian?
Brian, I just wanted to ask you, is this, was this the first year for Cliff, or is this his second year?
First year, he'll actually come off probation here, either the next meeting or the first one in March. He started sometime in February, so, yeah, we've had him 11 months working, yep.
That was a, that was a great decision to bring him on and help out with that because he's doing a great job. And, and the other comment that I want to make, the, the thing that always amazes me about your department is the grant money that you're able to get, and that doesn't come easy sometimes, and so certainly appreciate that. That saves us a lot of money in the long run, so thank you for that.
Well, and that's one thing I didn't really touch on, you know, I like to talk a lot, that North Industrial Park, we probably had, I want to say, $800,000 maybe in grant funds total on the Johnson Drive and the Beaman Street, you know, for water and sewer and street, so, you know, I'm pretty pleased with that, and it wasn't all me. I mean, you know, Mayor Slade, she was really involved with that, a lot of her contacts at the state, you know, Matt Davis, through the Regional Growth Partners, Megan from WETCO, I mean, we, it wasn't all me up there. We had a lot of people that were really involved with that, but I think between the mayor and I, we'll take credit for that. You know, we'll, we'll take the pat on the back anytime, so we thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, and Brian, I would like to thank you and your entire crew. As, it's kind of good for me to sit through these two council because this last year, some days I felt were a blur, you know, you were going through legislative changes every day from the government and a federal and state level, and so it's really refreshing to be reminded, not that I need it because I know how great our city employees are, but just all the things they could do and continue to provide for the community even in the midst of a pandemic, and the, how, how kind of afraid we were in March. Nobody knew whether to come to work or not come to work, we had to provide things to the public. You know, we were worried about trash, trash, wastewater, and they really all have risen to the occasion. So I could not be more proud of this crew, and I hope you are too, for the efforts that everyone put in for 2020. With that, last but certainly not least, we have Chief Siders from the Fire Department.
Good evening, council. I want to give everybody a brief overview of the activities from last year with the Fire Department. And like Ben said earlier, you know, everything's COVID, COVID, COVID. However, our calls for service, even though we saw a 16% decrease last year, is pretty typical for the Fire Department. We run about 400 calls every year, and last year, we saw 413 calls for service last year. Out of that, 58 of those calls were actually classified as fires, and of those 58 fires, we had 26 structured fires that we responded to in 2020. 64% of our calls, obviously, are generated in the city, and with that, we have the automatic mutual aid system throughout the county that we operate under with the other county fire departments. And last year, we received automatic aid or mutual aid eight times, and last year, we gave mutual aid or automatic aid to our other fire department partners in the county 19 times. Our average response time stays about the same from the time that we get the pagers going off until that first fire unit arrives on the scene is about six minutes. Our busiest day last year was, was Friday. And our busiest time last year was between 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM. Our fire prevention last year, our inspections, obviously, were down because of the COVID. We were not able to get out as much as we typically do in a year. However, we did take technology at hand, and we did do some inspections via GoToMeeting, Zoom, some of the other FaceTime-type applications that are out there. It's not the easiest thing to do when you're trying to do an inspection over an internet connection like this, it's kind of difficult. It's better if we can go out there and actually see it ourselves, but we were able to do that. Also, our programs were down last year again because of not being able to interact with, with our citizens. However, we did, through some innovation, were able to deliver 38 programs, and were able to reach about 12. However, we did, through some innovation, were able to deliver 38 programs and were able to reach about 1,200 adults and, and children. So our special activities last year was also down, obviously Jubilee Parade. We did have the fireworks. They were delayed, but we did have those. And of course, last year we had the drive-through city Halloween that Parks and Rec puts on on, on an annual basis. And I thought that went really well last year. Of course, we're always looking for more firefighters and if anybody's interested, they can contact us. We have applications on the web. You can go to the city's website and go to the fire department page. And you can look at the application there and what we do. And of course, the last thing that I want to touch on and praise is, of course, our, our firefighters, our men and women who go out there every day and sacrifice their, their time to go out and help protect this community that we all love. So these men and women that are, that are listed here on this page, I couldn't do it without them. And I really want to thank them very much for the time and the commitment that goes into being a member of the fire department. And with that, that's really all I've got for this evening.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a question. Under the causes of ignition, you have intentional. Is that include if you're burning garbage, things like that, or are those basically arson?
Those are arson cases.
Those are, okay.
That we, that we are either currently still under investigation or they're going through the legal process.
Is that a high number? It was, you know, nine seems like a lot, but maybe that's typical. I don't know.
We had a couple of fires this year that probably drove the number up more so than anything.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, chief, could you give me an example of a good intent call?
A good intent? I smell something in my house. I'm not sure what it is. It's smoke or I think I smell smoke. Those, those are good intent calls.
Okay. Because it seems like that's a fairly decent portion.
Yes, yes.
Good. Yes, you do. You guys do an excellent job. Thank you.
Council, do you have anything else for Chief Siders? Chief, I would like to again, thank you and, and your crew and staff. This year has been quite an adjustment. You've helped us out with some funding for dispatchers. You have had firemen down here in City Hall looking at our, our moonbeam machines because they aren't quite working. And apparently the firemen are the only ones smart enough to figure it out. So I appreciate them very much, helping us with that and, and helping our cleaning crew get through that. But you guys have again, risen above the, the call of duty. You always answer the call and you're one of the first people that have been in contact with COVID patients and positive patients. And so I do appreciate your staff and you.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. We appreciate it. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and go around the screen and see if anyone wants to add anything. First up, any city employees want to add anything? Tyson?
Yes, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to give a little information on battery recycling. For the last few years, the county health department or the county recycling department through the county health department has had a box for battery recycling out at our recycling facility. Since COVID, they have came and picked that up and it's not there anymore because they would pick all the, they sent them out around the county and pick them up randomly. And then they would have to drive all the batteries themselves to Wicksum, Michigan, which is up by Detroit, northwest of Detroit. With COVID, they're overwhelmed with that and cannot get the batteries to Wicksum. So they picked those up. So we right now don't have a container for used, worn out batteries at the recycling center. With COVID hopefully wrapping up here in the near future, they're going to reevaluate that. But in the meantime, regular alkaline batteries can be thrown away in the trash. Or if you want to recycle those or the rechargeable batteries, the Lowe's in Defiance has a box for batteries or the Home Depot, I think it was Angola, right, Mayor? Is it Angola? Okay. I have a box for batteries and that's. I've had quite a few phone calls in the last couple of weeks from people wanting to know what to do with the batteries since that container is gone now. But we finally got any answer today and that's, I'm just passing that information along.
Tyson, that was Auburn, Indiana, not Angola. Sorry.
Sorry, Auburn.
If you're getting quite a few phone calls, would it be helpful to put, or maybe you already have, something where it used to be stating that if you have a battery, here's who you can contact or, or no?
Yeah, we can do that. But we just finally got an email this afternoon from the health department, which I didn't know that they had picked that up until two weeks ago. And then we finally got the information or the, the answers from the county health department today. So, yeah, we'll get something up there. Or I even thought maybe get our own box and doing it ourselves, but until I realized that Wicksum was over two.
That's quite a little trip. Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Tyson.
Thanks, Tyson.
Anybody else from the city? Anyone from BNU have anything? If not, we'll go on to Rick.
I just want to welcome Jonathan Wood onto our police force. We keep adding people. That's good. Keep building that police force up and want to welcome him to the city. And beyond that, everyone just stay safe and hopefully we'll get through this COVID. It's, the vaccine is coming, so hopefully it'll be here soon.
Thank you, Rick. Judy, do you have anything, Dan?
I, I would also like to welcome Mr. Wood and I would like to also say thank you to Brian, Bruce and Ben. And you know, I didn't realize till I wrote this down that they all started with a B. So Brian, Bruce and Ben and their departments for their annual reports and for the nice work they do for us all year long. Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything?
Sure. I'd also like to welcome Jonathan Wood. I'd also like to say great job at the street department for the storm. You guys did an absolutely great job. And I'd also like to thank Brian, Ben and Bruce. You know, without you guys, we wouldn't have a great city like we do. So I appreciate everything you do, but I appreciate your staff. Keep it up. Thank you.
Dan, do you have anything?
No, just to echo the, welcome to Jonathan Wood, the Brian Fire, Brian Police Department. And also thanks to not only Brian and Bruce and Ben, but also Tricia and Kimberly and Cindy from the Brian Municipal Court for the annual reports. I think you can tell by council, they are both appreciated and read. So sometimes, you know, when I used to do annual reports, I'd think, geez, is anybody even looking at this? Just be aware that, yes, we are and it is appreciated very much. So thank you for doing that. Also want to thank, because I saw, I saw it and I'm glad it was pointed out by the mayor, I think. Or maybe it was Ben. I don't know who. But the Kiwanis and the Brian Area Foundation and all the people that donate to Brian City. But if you take a look at the rec department's annual report, those two definitely stand out. And that's just a, a testimony to the kind of service clubs and, and organizations that we have in Brian. So thank you to them as well. That's it.
Thank you, John. Lori, do you have anything?
Oh, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda, do you have anything?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, council, I just wanted to give you an update as far as the rest of the annual reports. Next meeting will be Chief Chappa and Wes Wigan. And then the final meeting, March 1st, will be Tyson Instrom. And then I will also have the State of the City. We'll probably share my screen, but it will be a more condensed version of what I usually do. So you guys will get those before the meeting to review as well. I cannot say enough about the city team though, and I think that they all know how much that we have appreciated everything that they've done. And anytime we said, look, we can't do this, but we need to think outside of the box. Everyone got together virtually because we've even had our department heads virtually to avoid mask quarantine around here. But they've changed their practices and things that we don't like, we still do. We have very good compliance with our employees about mask wearing. It took some education and some conversation to do that, but they also understand that they are leaders within the community. And we need to again, show by example. So I'm really proud of all of them and everything that they have done in the last year. And I look forward to what we can do together for 2021.
Thank you. Now I'm just going to echo what everyone else has said and also thank all the department heads and city employees for everything that they do. That's pretty much it for me. And I just seen a motion to adjourn.
So move, John. Jim.
John?
I guess.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Thank you.
Good night.